Call to order the city council work session for the city of East Grand Forks for July 9th, 2024. The city clerk, please call roll.
Senator Sanders.
Here.
Also President Mark Bolson.
Here.
Also Vice President Tim Riepel.
Here.
Also members of the council.
Here.
Ben Fox Sheminsky.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Havers.
Here.
Does it turn? Number one, review of Safe Streets for All Action Plan. Stephanie.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Howford with Forks MPO Executive Director. We're just coming forward with just an update on our Safe Streets for All Action Plan. Just a reminder, this was a grant we applied for with the MPO Grand Forks as well as East Grand Forks. It was a federal grant and we received $400,000 grant for that to do this study, which opens up doors for other federal funds. So I have Lou Weber here with Bolton Mink. That's going to go over our presentation.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thank you all for having me tonight. Stephanie took my entire presentation, so this is going to be very fast, I promise. So really, just to exactly like she said, here to talk about the Safe Streets for All Plan. So these are safety action plans that get to be put in place to really help unlock a pretty large pot of money that then the communities can go out and apply for implementation grants, for infrastructure needs, everything from roundabouts to perhaps new reconstructions, things like that, really are just aimed at trying to make the streets safer for all users. So a quick agenda, just to give you an idea of what I'm here to talk about tonight, talking about what is the Safe Streets for All process, the schedule that we're currently under, some of the engagement updates and what we've been up to, and then working with Alta, one of our subs on this project, on their high injury network that they've created, as well as the peer review, and then really just kind of the next steps. And this is the first night that you will see me here, but I will be here throughout the entire process. And so I'm meeting with both the MPO, but also I'm present, I'm here in the area, and so I want to be able to talk to anybody who has questions outside of these presentations as well. So with that, getting into what is the Safe Streets for All. So in 2021, the federal government created this pot of money. It's $1 billion sitting there every single year for implementation grants, but communities need to have these safety action plans in place before they're able to start applying for those. So that is where Stephanie came in and created the RFP, which Bolton and Mink came and responded to, and I was very excited because this is something that both Stephanie and I have paid attention to for about three years before me moving over to this role and being able to apply for this project. So super excited to be here and talk about it, but really excited for how this is going to impact the entire community. So the safe systems approach is broken down into five major elements. Each of those elements then has different, six kind of ideas and philosophies to really get there, those principles. Those are really making sure that the roads are safe for all users. This is everyone from pedestrians, cyclists, those with mobility issues, as well as, you know, our transit, our users from vehicles to also the freight movers. So making sure that we're using safe vehicles on the roads, creating safe speeds, so looking at that, we'll get a little bit more into that once we get into that high injury network, safe roads, and then really the post-crash care. So when we do have accidents on our roadways, that we're making sure that we're doing the necessary changes to make them safer. What this looks like is really starting to dive into what the road network looks like and the safety around those. So this was a good example of the city of Knoxville's interstate roadways and looking at some of the different traffic fatalities and traffic accidents that were happening on the roadways. So that gives us a better picture of how we need to start being proactive and looking at the entire process. I am going to try to move as fast as possible because there is quite a few slides, but if you do have questions, feel free to either ask them or save them for the end, whichever you feel more comfortable with. So we start by really looking at crash profiles. This gives us the information that we need to start identifying how those accidents are happening. So everything from the angle of what the crash is like, but then also looking at the different kind of accidents and high injuries that are happening. So this is everywhere from fatalities to immobilizing injuries on those crashes. So the way that the safety action plan for the city of Knoxville approached it was that they started taking some priority actions. So this is everything from policy decisions to infrastructure concepts and really laying out how these safety action plans can impact a community and what some of those will look like going forward. So if it's a full reconstruct, if it's maybe just some of those more easy to implement, and one of the things that we will be working on in this project is some pilots, so some implementations of trying some different ideas. Our sub who's on this project, Alta, is one of the leaders in Minnesota for a lot of these pilot projects. So it was a reason why we were excited to be able to work with them going forward on this. So our approach to the SS4A is looking at it more or less through eight steps. So the first one being leadership commitment and goal setting. So that is really working with our steering committee, working with the MPO, and working with these community-based organizations throughout both Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, and making sure that we're seeing it not just from the lens of a consultant, but also from the lens of local people who are here on the ground. That ties into our planning structure, how we're going to approach the entire process, the safety analysis, so looking at the entire network of the entire area, and then that engagement and collaboration. How are we taking the information that we're getting? How are we also receiving the information and then collaborating with the members of the community to make sure that it's a process for all of us? That's really important to be founded in equity, making sure that these roads are usable for all people, not just vehicles, not just people who are walking or cycling, but that it's a safe network for all users. This is often referred to as Vision Zero, as a lot of people know it, but this really starts to look at those local roads instead of just interstate systems or major highways. From there, we do start to look at any of the policy or processes changes that could be assistive in making safer roads. The strategy and project selections, that's where we really start to get into the things that you can start applying for. So those are opening up those pots of money that then you can actually go out and go after. And then the progress and transparency is really important for us. We want to make sure that we're here talking to everybody, but we're also letting people know that here's what we're learning, both through data but also through storytelling. And if this isn't accurate by anyone around the table, that we're accounting for that, that we're making sure we're coming back to you and collaborating with you throughout this whole process. So to jump into the project schedule, where we're at is very early on in that. So we're only about four or five months in, so this may feel like maybe either the first or second time that you're hearing about this project. It's important for us to be here that early on. We didn't want to come to you on day one and say, here's what is going to happen, but some of the things that we've already worked on to be able to tell you, and then also let you know that this isn't the last time that you're going to see me. We're going to have these local government presentations throughout the entire project. So you will see it both at these early phases, middle of the project, and then once we start to get into the actual implementation, and some of those project deliverables as well. So to highlight a little bit of our public engagement that we have done, Stephanie went and handed out these cards for you. This is what we've really used at some of our different pop-up events, as well as our open house that was held at the Empire in mid-June. So those pop-up events are more or less just a way for us to get this information out there. We have a really nice online website where people can go to for the project information, but on there is also an interactive web map. This is a place where you can go on and say, oh, this is my favorite intersection I ever get to drive through, or I've never felt comfortable walking down this street. So it's been really fun to not just allow the community to go out and give us the feedback, but also watch them interact with each other on that web map. They're able to say, hey, I know that you felt this way, is this maybe why? Or is this something that could happen in this way to resolve some of those issues that you're feeling? So I highly suggest all of you check out that web map. It's a fun place to be able to go and also see maybe what your constituents are saying, but also for you to give us some of the feedback about how you're feeling about the roadways. So we have had a couple of those different pop-up events. We had a pop-up event at Art Fest, we had our open house over at the Empire, and then we'll also be at Skidmore Park this Saturday. So that's working with one of our community-based organizations, which we have five of, and we'll be partnering with them on being across the street from the North End Dairy Queen. And Stephanie already has a comment.
I was just going to say, maybe not everyone knows what Skidmore Park is.
Yes, sorry, I should make sure on that. So the North End Dairy Queen in Grand Forks on Fifth Street. Skidmore Park is kind of the weird little park that's on Gateway across the street from that. So University Park neighborhood has really kind of put an emphasis on trying to revitalize that area. And so as one of our partners on this project, it was really exciting to have them invite us to come and share the information on this project. So it's not necessarily that I'm going to be out there with 100 boards and giving all the data that we have. It's more or less really just to promote their opportunity to give us that feedback. So should be a really fun time and just more ways for us to get out. So if anybody ever has more ideas, one of the benefits of me living and working here in town is that I want to be able to promote this project all over the community. So not just here, but please let me know if you have other ideas as well. So now to get into kind of the more fun technical stuff, this is where Alta really highlights a lot of their work. So they're creating this high injury network. This is something that will be a dashboard that's not just internally used by us, but also shareable. So this will also be something that the public can consume once we're at that point. So we had a project steering committee meeting earlier this morning, and I really got to start to dig into that. So it's important for us, like I already said, the transparency here isn't just, we're going to do a ton of work on the backend and then maybe show up at the last five minutes with it. We want to make sure that we're communicating with our steering committee and with the MPO to make sure that all that process is accurate and all the information is also accurate on how we know that our streets are, not just the way that somebody in Minneapolis is looking at our street network. So that high injury network is created by looking at the critical crash rate across the entire area. So this isn't just when an accident happened, but also looking at what kind of accidents they are, and really what the injuries are that are happening here. And so a good one to use as an example of a road area that had a problem most recently is Airport Road in Grand Forks. Kind of out by the airport, that intersection was one that, not only are there a lot of accidents there, but there's been fatalities there. So we want to look at those kind of roadways with a special emphasis. And looking at that high injury network has been fascinating and also heartbreaking at times because you're not just looking at data, you're looking at people's lives. And so it's really important for us to not just look at it from a data lens, but the story behind that lens. So we do take all of that information that's in there and then combine it into that critical crash rate. So this gives us the information by looking at every single accident that happens across the entire region, which is a lot of information, and then starting to extrapolate how those accidents are happening, what's happening with them. And so an important note on there is the intersection analysis. So really starting to dive into why are these accidents happening? Not just how are they happening, but what is maybe happening because of the design? What is it maybe that we need to be looking at for those roadways and how do we need to approach those differently? And, oop, there we go.
Delay.
Delay. So the geographic parity is where we really start to talk about where we're talking about. So not just looking at the roadways in Grand Forks, but also really looking at it on both East Grand Forks and Grand Forks. So Bigland Road was one that I know is an identified high injury network road. So I know that there's already a lot of actions that are being taken on that roadway, but what are maybe some of the different things that we can arm Stephanie with, that we can arm even the city with, to maybe go out and get some of those implementation grants to increase more safety in those areas? And the last thing that Alta is working on currently is the peer review. So this is identifying a good safety action plan approach based on some of our peer communities. And so looking at the MPO's bounds, what are maybe some of the other communities that we see as far as relevant information? This is everything from the urban or rural context, but also what is the geographic context? What does the populace look like? And really, what are maybe some of the different environmental impacts too? So when we look at this, we really start to take into account of what weather looks like in these areas. So some of the different, like I said, these peer selections are based on these variety of factors here, the climate, the population, the quality of analysis, countermeasure selection, communication, and plan outcomes. So not just looking at the ones who are maybe going through the same process that the MPO is going through, but maybe ones like Knoxville who's already there. So what were the things that worked really well in those communities? What maybe can we do that they wish they would have done? And so the benefit of having a firm like Alta on this is that they've actually done these safety action plans all over the country. So when we can pick their brain throughout this process, it can help us eliminate maybe things that wouldn't be as beneficial for our community. So the peer communities that we have identified are the Greater Madison MPO, the Knoxville Regional TPO, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and then Ann Arbor as well. So these were selected based on the way that they approached their safety action plans, some of the weather elements, but also some of the population distribution. And so making sure that we're looking at what worked with them, what didn't, and what lessons we can learn from them. So the next steps that we're moving on through is a lot more virtual public engagement, so continuously pushing people to the interactive web map, which will consistently update throughout the project. So as we start to create implementable ideas, we plug those into that interactive web map so we can get more comments on there. It's not just a static map, it will update with the project as well. Some more different pop-up opportunities, which, like I said, we have a pretty good budget here to do more. So we have some in our pipeline, but it doesn't mean that we're limiting ourselves. So when people think of things or know of something that's going on, I welcome all of you to ask me to show up to those because it's fun for me to come out and talk about this stuff. So refinement of the high injury network, we're looking at early August to kind of have that actually up and running, and then continued peer review. So as we're going through this entire project, which lasts until next August, we're never done looking at that peer review because it's important for us to look at it, step back and look back at it again and make sure that we're doing the stuff right. And that is my last slide, so I will stand for any questions.
Yeah, Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the steps that you're going through to open the door for us to potentially get these sources of funds available to us, to catch our highest priorities for infrastructure. I think it's really good that you're able to make it customized to our local area, to the size of population, to the climate, even the preferences of the people that we have here. That local presence that you guys have is also very important. Would you please, we all know how sometimes it happens that this process unfolds to the very end, and then folks come forward and say, wait a minute, there's this area right here that we should have zeroed in on. And if all of us are being honest, we say, you know, we should have, if we'd have known of it maybe right away or halfway through the process versus at the very end. And I know it's ongoing, we could pick it up in the next round. Would you, I know this is kind of basic, but would you please talk about five or six or seven or eight things that could come from this, like sidewalk or an improved intersection, maybe a traffic signal or roundabout, just those tangible things that, so if someone's in the neighborhood listening and looking, okay, what could this bring to my neighborhood? I've noticed a problem, could this address that problem, yes or no? Would you, just the most mundane elements that could come in through this process?
Yeah, do you want to take any of it, or you want me to? We both can probably.
We can both do it.
Like I said, this was something that when I was still at the DDA, we were already talking about the excitement that I had around the SS4A, because it can be everything from intersection reconstructions, it can be, like you said, roundabouts, sidewalks, RRFBs, which is a term that I didn't know until I started working for an engineering firm, rapid rectangular flashing beacons. So we're all used to hawk signals where they're up above. These bring those flashing beacons down to height, kind of the driver's height, so you actually see it, which brings your attention to where the pedestrians are. So those are just some that come to my mind, but.
I think you pretty much nailed it. I don't think I really need to add anything to it. It's really going to kind of look at those intersections and those corridors and what makes sense for implementing to change it to a safer route.
So if a resident sees something regarding traffic, pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular, maybe even to rail, that they think is either not safe or could be streamlined in some way, you want to hear from them?
Always, 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 always. And I don't have my card with me, but I can make sure that I get some cards over to Stephanie, and I want to be able to plaster my email all over so people know. It's all over the project website as well, so whenever people go there. But exactly like you said, I want that feedback. You know, it's such a hard thing for me when we're doing so much data analysis. Data doesn't tell the story of the people's experiences. And so looking at the high injury network, was a fascinating piece to me was, Gateways always felt like a very busy corridor for vehicular traffic. It was actually really low on the high injury network because a number of factors, but it was my lived experience that, man, it always feels like a road that, as a car, I can get from point A to point B. As a pedestrian, it can sometimes be a little intimidating, so I thought, oh, it must be on that network. Well, it wasn't because it's actually very efficient in the way that it moves vehicles. Now, once it starts to change, we need to be looking at those conditions and as those change, but those are personal experiences that don't show up in the data.
Other thing I like about a process like this, and then I'll stop, but this is a way to make sure the dollars go to the greatest need, not my pet project that I'm trying to ram through, the dollars go to the highest need, that's a big deal also.
And you should all be very proud and excited about Stephanie's work that she's done on this, because the $400,000 grant that she got to put together this plan is four times what the Fargo Moorhead area got. And so it wasn't necessarily that she just saw the need on this. She also said, look, we can also make use of this in a way that other communities can't. And she put it out there on a limb and was very successful in this way. And so it gets to be a very implementable study for you guys as well.
Thanks.
For all of us.
Bill, say anything. All right, I appreciate you coming in.
Thanks for your time.
Have a good evening. I'll move on to number two. Consider approval of the 2025 fixed route and dollar ride application. Nancy, if I didn't want to talk.
Just our annual operating grants. They're looking at a 95-5. We're going to see some more federal funds come into play. We noticed our appropriations from the feds go up considerably from our 2023 appropriations. So last year, the amount that the feds were giving us was 135,000. This year it's 208,000. So it's noticeable difference. So we didn't see much of a change. Last year, our request was 500,000, this year it's 519 for fixed. Last year, the dialeride cost estimate was 199, we're at 195 this year. We were given, I was given a directive to reduce my salary request from 25% to 20%. The local share for dialeride is 12% instead of the 5% that they stated that we'd be paying. We're going to see a change in dialeride because there were many overages in Grand Forks. They were under budget last year, and there was quite a bit of local share that was paid out. So I just wanted to make sure that I kind of put some of those costs in, because I can only request so much based on my cost allocation model, but they're still working through their process in Grand Forks. So I just wanted to make sure that I added that local share, which doesn't come into play with these operating grant applications. But I wanted to show it on our side. Now, once we get the contract and they award me my funds, then we can adjust and get that into the budget before the end of 2024, so that we can kind of remove some of the fluff. But I get very concerned with transit because one bus accident, one, you know, engine repair, you name it, a van, those types of things, and then that cost is being added to our bill. So I like to be able to just understand that's about what we budgeted this year, so I just rolled that budget over to 2025, and hopefully we're still in that general ballpark. So, does anybody have any questions?
Questions from anyone? I see none, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number three, consider approving hiring of new police officer. Chief Headland.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to bring this forward in case any of the council members had any questions. We are currently one officer short. At the moment, it doesn't feel like it because we do have Officer Gunderson, Corporal Gunderson, working the street, covering a shift right now during the summer, but he will be going back into the schools in the fall. So this is, will fill our one opening. Mr. Gray is a four-year veteran, South Lake Minnetoka Police Department, who's relocated to this area. Any questions from anyone?
Do they have any questions? Ben?
Just, how long has this one been open? Weren't we full?
No.
We were, okay.
We were, I take that back. We were full until we put Corporal Gunderson back into the school. That put us back one short, and this will be our, this is the first applicant that we interviewed that we chose to hire, or chose to move forward with since that time.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Congratulations, keep it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just curious if you have any feedback on what brings Mr. Gray to our community? Is it the hiring bonus or desire to move to a nicer, smaller town?
Actually, connections, his girlfriend, her parents live in town, so, and she now, she has a job started yesterday in town, so we're in Grand Forks, so.
Thank you. Bill, say anything. I see none, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, number four, discussion on sales tax ballot questions. Mr. King.
Thank you, Council President. The final ballot questions for the facility improvement projects are due to the county attorney 74 days before the election. So that means we have to have it in by August 13th. Correction there to the RCA, wrote the 23rd, but it's actually the 13th. City staff has been working with Kennedy and Graven to draft ballot questions to ensure that we comply with all the state requirements. There's been a few changes since this RCA was made. Originally, we thought there would be two ballot questions for the 2024 election, and those would come in two separate, two separate questions for, because we're on two separate project sites. One for the Civic Center Arena and one for the, or I should say Civic Center Sports Complex, and one for the VFW Memorial Arena. What we've learned since then is, because the way our city charter is set up, we will then, when we get to the fundraising portion of the project, almost could call it like a phase two, we would have to ask a third question based on if we'd be able to go out and take a general obligation bond for the fundraising. Working with Kennedy and Graven, it sounds like we could ask the two questions in the 2024 election based on the sales tax, because the third question is hinging on the fact if there is a sales tax that passes. So recommendation would be to ask the two questions, for the Civic Center and for the VFW in the 2024 general election, and then ask the third question if those two, if those two questions pass, then we would ask the third question in the 2026 election based on where we're at for fundraising. If you look in the third question, you'll see that there's a space left open for the amount of what's, how much we're asking to bond for, and that's because until we know if the sales tax passes, we don't really know what the right amount to be, would be to put in that and to ask the people for that question. And then just a quick update for everyone, just a reminder on some of the items that will be funded with the use of the sales tax. The Civic Center Arena will be building enhancements, overall safety and access improvements, site and parking lot improvements, and then the possibility of a reconfigured ball fields. And then at the VFW Arena would be refrigeration system and ice lab replacements, interior enhancements, dehumidification, spectator enhancements throughout the building, and then improved community access as well. So the recommendation at this time would still be to move forward with the two questions as they were provided in the RCA.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a comment. Regarding when we're going to start to promote this to the community, just because I know that this has been talked about for a really long time, and I do think that it's kind of gone on the back burner, and included in this is part of your marketing going to really try to focus on the economic impact that these two buildings do have on our community and what they bring into our community, just because I don't think that people necessarily always think about the secondary things that happen, and so I really would like to see some of that happen.
Yeah, absolutely. Good question. We're currently working with GLG architects and construction engineers, and hopefully by, by the end of this week, we'll have a updated reinvestment booklet, which will touch on everything that the sales tax could do for our community as far as the marketing project goes with bringing in extra dollars into the community. That's something that will also, you know, showcase as we're, we've started working on flyers and different things that kind of show why this is important to our community and what it can really do, so.
And I think it's just, I think it's more of like an importance. I really think that it's kind of pivotal, just because I do really feel that these two buildings, on the forefront, people see it as it's only hockey, or it's only youth sports. But on the other side of it, really, when we bring these events into town, they do benefit the community as a whole. benefit the community as a whole, not only on the economic side of it, but what it draws people to want to live in our community.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've, we've seen, you know, the studies were done in, I think it was 2021, and that then it shows that there's a large economic impact that these buildings bring into our community, and we'll certainly be highlighting those going forward. As far as the timeline goes to start getting the word out, hopefully here by the end of the month, we'll start engaging the public, and we've already started working with the, some of the clubs, and they're going to be taking the lead on a lot of the, a lot of the advertisements and, you know, the city will stay very neutral in getting that information out to the public.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Helms.
I have a question that doesn't pertain to.
We can't very well charge our residents or anybody. We're doing it right here at City Hall.
I will visit with them.
Does it, doesn't look very impressive to me.
Yeah, I visited with them today. They were missing some other locations, so.
Yeah. If we could do that, then just look a little nicer. Thank you.
All right. If nothing else from Mr. King, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Oh.
Mr. Helms? Second.
Pachminsky, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion is carried. Mean is adjourned.
So this, this part is the third question. So you really.